All right, well, very sexy.
Try to get the chickens in.
Any new for executive tonight?
I've got four things.
Oh, my, sure. Okay.
Um, legal, there might be some aspect of the fill request that we might want to discuss because it involves legal.
Okay.
Um, counsel.
Yep.
Um, there's a personnel matter out of the town manager's office to discuss. There is, um, perhaps some aspect of the scrap metal discussion that involves personnel that you might want to have an executive session, some portion of that discussion. Uh, and then finally, contracts, Chittenden would like to renew our annual policing contract.
Oh, okay.
We can discuss that with you.
And are we voting on the amended agenda that we got the second agenda or the first agenda?
The second one, we do have the policy that says if by Monday new I change the agenda, that's the.
That's okay.
We reposted it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the second agenda as amended, the one from Monday.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything on the minutes of last, last meeting? I didn't see anything.
No, I'll circulate those.
I gotta sign that bank when you get ready up to it. Wake up here.
See what's on our account?
What'd you say?
If you want to take a nap, you can take a nap before sunrise.
There we go.
Building here, but that's okay.
I think pregnancies has its advantages sometimes.
Yep.
What'd you say?
Yeah, I can't, I heard what'd you say? That's the only thing I understood.
Heard me well the last few years.
Yeah, yeah, that I heard too.
Uh, anything on the orders?
One thing I've got, as I always do, uh, just so people know, we just sent
Oh, God.
the school almost $433,000 more. So it's out there.
Yep.
No questions?
I guess, yeah, I don't have anything.
We'll circulate the three orders.
It's good to hear. T-balls. It's good to hear.
Yeah, drinking, what is that noise?
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Nope. I mean, T-balls was on his hands. Oh, I know, those things are weird.
They're disgusting.
They like the hood of your car, what's up with that? It's already had enough though, but I guess they like the extra heat. Don't they get my car?
Those things like carbon monoxide, like.
Relative.
Car maybe, like a little block.
I just see everything.
I know mosquitoes are, mosquitoes go to CO2, I don't know about mayflies.
Mayflies at my house are terrible. Little black gnats or no.
Oh, no, this garden today is, this sun today, I heard a mosquito buzzing on me.
Only one?
Yes, thank God.
By place, you can't open your mouth from this time on.
Well, you've had a lot of wet near you, it poses to me as a wreck, I guess. Last one.
Just keep going.
Managers report.
Yes, thank you. Um, Jennifer Pop began work on May 10th, enabling her to work with Nelson for a week of transition, some overlap there. Uh, we look forward to working with Jennifer and wish her the very best in her new career. She'll hopefully be here to join our meeting tonight. Um, due to a pre-existing commitment to Lothrup, she'll be working here part-time, half-time until June 11th, so for the next three and a half weeks or so. Jen will then begin work a full-time schedule, regular hours, Monday, June 14th. Um, we've received a letter from FEMA formally approving the town's updated local hazard mitigation plan for a five-year period. We now expect to receive a final invoice from Stephanie Burke of the Regional Planning Commission, who helped lead us through the process. The town will then be in a position to request reimbursement from the grant administrators. Uh, the recent removal by Casella of silt fencing at the transfer station marks the completion of the salt shed project. We can now expect to receive final invoices from Casella, GPI, and Otter Creek Engineering, after which we'll be in a position to seek our final grant reimbursement, following which again, we'll give you an accounting of where all the dollars went. With regard to the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, there was a webinar held yesterday on the 18th hosted by VLCT discussing how this COVID relief law, again known as ARPA, can advantage the town. Bottom line is that there will soon be a need for the town to certify that we want the funding. That shouldn't be a tough decision to make, should be in the neighborhood of $300,000. But after taking the funds and depositing them, and yes, we're allowed to put them in an interest-bearing account, there is no rush to spend the funds with the deadline of December 31st, 2024, to commit the money and December 31st, 2026 to actually spend it. So that will give the board plenty of time to evaluate lots of options, which no doubt will be rolled before you in the coming weeks and months. VLCT guidance is basically to be patient, be strategic, be deliberate. There's another kind of information handout from VLCT in tonight's packet summarizing the act and what are the eligible and ineligible uses of the money. Of the four broad eligible uses, the one that jumps out as kind of easiest to define and to identify uses for is the area of water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, although we'll be looking at all four categories. Without committing any funds, the town manager will work with the Water and Sewer Commission and the Select Board and the Water and Sewer Superintendent to generate a list of capital priorities, so that will be ready with recommendations when you want to hear them.
Right.
The Fire Hill Bridge Project saw seven contractors attend a pre-bid meeting at the site, um, on, um, yesterday morning. Bids are due this next Thursday, May 27th, and will be reviewed by the Select Board at its June 2nd meeting. At it, at the request of the Pittsburgh Historical Society, the highway crew moved the Crown Point Historic Marker from Depot Hill by the pump station, the upper pump station where it has been for quite a while, until the Pittsburgh Historical Society decides where it should be properly placed to be more historically accurate. Apparently.
Yeah, the road didn't go until after.
Nobody believes that that site is where the Crown Point Road was, so they have other sites they're going to be evaluating.
Well, it's just the other side of the tracks, that's where it went through.
If you, if you know that, I know Bill Powers is gathering research.
It went through your land, yeah?
Well, it goes through my, yeah, it goes, because it's that big, well, there's a humongous rock, Markowski Solar Field, at least, and I believe that's where it went through, so essentially kind of along that, as you're going up the truck route, that kind of ridge of ledge, right out in there on the right to the north, there's that huge rock, and as far as I know, the, it talks about this huge rock in the description of the road.
Okay.
So, that's.
Whereas we stand ready to help them place it when they just come to a decision of exactly where they want it.
Yeah.
There will be a staff meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock, as always, selectmen are invited and welcome to attend. The committee members of the sidewalk scoping study will meet via Zoom on Tuesday, May 25th at one o'clock for a kickoff meeting. That'll be between our consultant, Vtrans, the Regional Planning Commission, Alicia, myself, and Chad Ujere. And at that point, we will probably set a schedule, which will eventually have a public concerns meeting, which will be held in conjunction with a select board meeting down the road to get input from people about sidewalks and where they think they might be good, well-positioned. Uh, the town offices will be closed Monday, May 31st in observance of the Memorial Day holiday.
John, I didn't get, I didn't, um, go, I didn't watch that VLCT webinar, but I did the one on the 12th, that was the National League of Cities, and, um, and I'm not, so there's a couple of things I was unclear of that, maybe you've got more clarification on through VLCT, isn't, is it only half up front though, the money?
Yes, we'll get half of it, um, in the next week or two, because the state's supposed to get it this weekend. They have a short timeframe to.
In like 30 days to get it out.
And then, um, the next batch will be next spring, is the latest I've heard.
Okay, and then, the other thing that I wasn't sure about was, um, so that's the, the cash given out to the municipalities, but is there also separate money to, like, you can apply for grants over and above, like what?
There's actually, um, two sets of money that we definitely are going to get. We're going to get the allocation to what are called, um, non-entitlement communities. That means, that's every town in Vermont except for Burlington and South Burlington, which are deemed to be metro areas.
Right, right.
So we get our allocation based on our population, plus the federal government gives money in a separate batch to counties, because many states have strong county governments, which we really don't. So they're going to take some share of the county money and give it to each municipality as well.
Okay.
I don't doubt that there's plenty of other buckets of money coming to Vermont. Those are the ones specifically going to towns. We may have further grant opportunities to go through Vtrans or the federal government to seek additional money beyond, but we're going to get this money regardless, and we have three years to figure out how to spend it.
All right, great.
Yep. And by the way, um, if you're interested, that VLCT talk has been recorded, and you can click a link and listen to it if you want.
Oh, sorry.
It's just 90 minutes, and we actually heard from somebody from the National League of Cities, but the guidance is moving so quickly that there's new information.
Yeah, yeah.
If you'd like, I'll send you that notice about the link.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else would like to see the link? I'll send it to you anyway.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for John?
This money, John, there must be some mandates connected with it.
Yeah, and like I said, there's four broad categories, um, in tonight's packet. The question and answer sheet kind of tells you what those categories are, and they have some frequently asked questions. ARPA includes four broad criteria for eligible uses. One, to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Another category is to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Now, we're trying to get more guidance as to what's an eligible worker. In the past, it's been healthcare providers, but we've had people who worked, that's another question, is retroactivity, who worked during the early difficult days, transfer station, water and sewer police.
Yeah.
The question is whether they would be eligible for it. Um, it didn't look like it, but we'll stay on that. Third category is for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to COVID health emergency, and they're going to send us a formula on how to measure whether we suffered a loss of revenue one year versus the next. They assume a 4.1% increase year after year, so if we perhaps collected less than that additional amount, which I know we did, because we, we asked for less than, uh, our flat funding.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
We may be entitled to some share of it just to replenish coffers, but again, the final one, which is the clearest, uh, and easiest to understand, says to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Now, I should point out that in Washington, um, it seems that there's a lot of bipartisan support for an infrastructure bill. Question is, are we going to pay for it, how big it's going to be, but even, um, while one side is shooting for the moon, the other side's at least willing to talk about ponying up six, seven, eight hundred billion dollars, and that's not chump change. So that might happen later this year, so stay tuned for more opportunities to spend maybe on highway and other infrastructure.
Was, isn't there some debate about what is infrastructure, like the classic definition of infrastructure, structure versus?
Right, yeah, yeah.
The piece that I heard about broadband too, is that like to, um, meets or exceeds 100 MBPSs, which I know nothing about.
Megabytes.
But, but then people are saying, which is kind of like, interesting that that's what it, that was like the, the threshold, but that's not even enough for like a multi-person household?
No.
So it's just interesting to spend all that money to have it not even be.
Usable.
Adequate. Was interesting, you know?
Well, and it's also, I mean, from regional, when they were talking about that, they figure it, it's a minimum of 300 million to get it up running in the state, and yet they're only putting in 250. You know, it's like, at least.
You're almost there, just go.
Yeah, exactly, really, seriously, you know, you can't take 50 out of somewhere else and get us so we can function, but, anyway.
Learn a lot more about it, and we'll have.
Yeah.
From VLCT and the Regional Planning Commission along the way.
Okay.
So if we ever have a crazy idea, we just ask them, do you think this is eligible? And they're going to answer, tell us.
All right.
I don't know.
Perfect. All right, do you have any select board member remarks?
I got a few.
Ooh.
Okay, so last night's, uh, regional meeting, uh, the Pittsburgh Furnace Brook Solar, uh, they gave them a preferred site letter, Pyco View Solar, regional gave them a preferred site letter. Uh, I don't know if we know this or not, but there's evidently going to be a major Velco substation upgrade at Omia, so that is coming. Um, Devin Neary made a presentation on the Transportation Planning Initiative for the TPI. Um, it's Guide Planning for Transportation. Uh, it's set up to give towns more say on state and federal projects. Um, has to do with improving water quality, reducing road damage. Um, oh, let's see, what else? So they've evidently started a road foreman newsletter, it's a quarterly, uh, to update roads foremen on policy updates. I presume Chad knows that.
They have a monthly lunch meeting, but because of COVID.
Well, that's, that's why they went to this latter. Uh, not that this really pertains to us, but I found it interesting, there's an electric bike lending library in Rutland.
Oh, yeah?
So if somebody thinks they want to try out an electric bike, I guess you can borrow one. I don't know if there's any fee, I don't, you know, they didn't get into that, but, uh, there is one in, in Rutland, so you can try them out and see if you like them.
The library, you said?
No, a lending library, not, not at the library.
Not at the library.
No, electric bike lending library, kind of like a library, except.
No, I get what it is.
Shelves instead of books, you got.
No, I got you.
Okay, all right, all right, well, you know. Uh, let's see, July 19th, the Ethan Allen Express will resume, uh, railroad going back and forth. I'm not sure if the 19th, it extends to Burlington, but it is going to extend to Burlington shortly. Uh, the bus in Rutland is getting two electric buses.
Yeah.
Uh, they're able to get them, uh, through the Volkswagen lawsuit funds. Um, Westminster Cracker is looking for 20 employees, Carpenter and Costin is looking for 15 employees. Uh, there is also, this was from Lyle Jepson, um, which is, let's see, he's the cha, what is it called now?
Cedar.
Oh, yeah.
Cedar, yes, whatever is the new name, but anyway.
Chamber and Economic Development.
Chamber and Economic, yeah, they combined the two. Anyway, they have a revolving loan fund, uh, it has $750,000 in it. Uh, people can borrow from, anywhere from 5,000 to 250,000. Uh, I guess the interest rates are maybe a little challenging. He said, you know, they're kind of the last, last straw for people, but it, it is there and is available. And this you may want to look into, John. Um, there is money for sewer projects which have not yet started, and the guy from Fair Haven asked about that, because they've got one similar to our, I don't know if ours was bid out yet, but theirs, it was approved two years ago, and theirs hasn't been bid out yet. So Devin was pretty sure that one would qualify, so it might be something for you to look into, because maybe it would save us some money on our upgrade to our plant that we're doing, anyway.
Um, good question, yeah. I'm, I'm actually going to be talking to, um, a bunch of people discussing water and sewer, uh, funding packages that are available, and it does seem like, um, there's a lot of money around to the point where the state is willing to offer 100% forgivable loans for, uh, water and sewer studies to support future upgrades. So those are things I'll probably learn about Friday.
Okay. I guess probably said enough. Oh, it's, you know, it's all good info.
Yeah, no.
I'd like to comment, I had a chance, I've been through the covered bridge since they put the runners in it twice, and it's made a hell of a big difference.
Oh, yeah, great job, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know whether, that had been inspected not too long ago, and it turned up a lot of red flags, so.
Every two years they do.
Check it out again.
Every two years they do inspections, and yeah, we have a lot of more, um, more involved work that needs to be done, but job one was to make sure no cars were going to fall through the deck, so we.
Yeah, looks good. Looks like it.
And I talked with Chet, by the way, and he said he agrees, um, that the entrance that they did replace the sub decking on, uh, was most in need. The rest of it, to him, looks in pretty good shape, but he thinks it's a good idea that when we come time to replace the runners, we'll do a more thorough evaluation of the complete undercarriage, so.
Yeah.
Do some more in, installation, if there's rot or things like that.
I was going to stop and take a look at the sand shed, but the gate was open, but nobody appeared to be there, so I didn't.
You can go in as long as you don't drop your garbage.
I, uh, I couldn't help but notice, I wondered how wide is the door? It seemed like that door looks narrow.
I think it's.
We went, we went through that.
We went through that.
It was 14 feet.
Yeah.
It's 14 foot.
It's 14 feet and not an inch short of that, which, which they.
Not an inch over that.
Or, or under, make sure no less than 14. And the highway crew seems to be able to get it on out of there without too much trouble, so far.
Yeah, well, they don't have a plow on yet.
Which are time, we shall see.
Yeah. Yeah, the plow was going, the wing is going to be the problem. Just driving by, well, it looked, well, the building's big, so it makes it look small.
Well, that is small. It looked like it was plenty high, yeah, but it looked narrow for the height.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a 20-foot door on our garage and 16-foot high, and, uh, yeah, that's, I wonder if maybe it would have been nice, but, got to stop looking at it.
Well, we, yeah, we.
We'll stop, I care for how many meetings?
Yeah.
Three, four?
We're three, yeah.
14 feet is the number.
It's.
We tried to get it bigger, but it wasn't.
Nope, no.
Hey, we're going to get it.
It'll, it'll get made bigger sometime.
Yeah, it will, yeah. They, they were trying to squeeze us even further and draw a line in the sand, at least.
Sorry.
All right, any other remarks?
Thank you, Joe, I'll let the highway crew know that, we appreciated that work.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing we don't have any public comment, no, not a single person on tonight.
Oh, cool.
How sad.
Yeah.
I hope they don't say two more, so.
I did. All right, so, since Jen's here, we'll go, we'll go right to introduction, introduction of our new rec director.
Probably requires not much of an introduction, because you know so many people already.
Yeah.
But, uh, we wanted, we wanted to give everybody a chance to kick the tires, say hello, Jen, and wish you, wish you well. Let, maybe let us know how things are going for you so far.
Yeah, um, it's going great so far. We're getting baseball underway. Um, I just started this week a weekly, um, email that goes out, so all the parents and coaches are updated on game schedules, picture schedules, um, any changes. And then I did my first posting today on Facebook for Junior Day Bruce, so I need to, I'm going to be putting some more stuff on Facebook. Um, and I'm also working on a permission form for all the families, so that I can post pictures of the games on Facebook that I've taken.
Oh, cool.
So, trying, and then I'm working on starting a Twitter account, so.
Oh.
Is that going?
Fantastic.
The pictures will be great, I mean, I feel like I've been blessed last few years, because Greg Babcock has been like.
Yeah.
He's coached, and he is, is a phenomenal photographer and stuff, but that's going to be awesome for all the kids that don't have.
Yeah.
I guess their coach.
It's been good, I've been trying to make it to the games, and, uh, last night I left a little early, so I could come back and finish up, but it's been great to see the kids are having a lot of fun out there, went over to T-Ball tonight, and they're having a blast out there, great coaches, so.
Yep.
And then, um, Randy informed me of the, uh, Brown Robin, that's usually held on the open house, so that's what I'm working on right now.
Oh, cool.
And then I just interviewed another camp director, so. She was great, I'm hoping she'll take that position. Lifeguards, we're pretty good with lifeguards.
Oh, good.
And by the way, guess who is working as a lifeguard and has for many years now? Former town manager Kathleen Ramsey. She works weekends as well.
As our lifeguard?
Lifeguard.
Really?
That's the coolest thing ever.
Well, yeah, well, there's hope for you, John. There is hope for you.
I won't pick the day job just yet, but. Barely the backstroke.
She goes in middle guard, that doesn't she?
Uh.
Okay, yeah, that's right. And of course, we'll be back, um, to talk about, uh, other projects going forward. Um, Alicia, and I haven't had a chance to talk with you about it, but Alicia thinks it's a good idea, I agree, that maybe you come on a, maybe a quarterly basis or as needed, to use the platform when we do have an audience, to spread, to spread the word about what programs are going on and what you're up to.
Yeah.
Most immediately, we probably will be discussing, um, expanded parking at the recreation area. Uh, that's been an issue that, uh, is more and more important as we get bigger and bigger crowds of people, which is great, and, um, we'll want to discuss that maybe at the next meeting, about what the options are in terms of in-house versus going out to contract and that kind of thing.
Um, I'm also, I forgot to mention, we're working on a book trail too, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, Christine Tate, uh, the librarian at Lothrup, and myself and Kayla Desabre are going to hike Friday the trails to, there's a couple that we have in mind, so we're going to pick the one that's more feasible and that the kids frequent more, so.
Cool.
Great. Awesome. Yeah, I'm sure you're going to reach out, you're going to reach more people through like Facebook and Twitter, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think that, I don't know, hopefully some people come in person at some point sooner, be, you know, just like, just coming once in a, you know,
Yeah.
all the time, but just every once in a while, just kind of, another, yet another venue to like update people.
Right.
So they know what's going on, but.
And it gets in the minutes, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So the people that read the minutes.
Yep, it's on fake TV too.
Well, that's right.
Right, yeah, it's on fake TV.
Fake TV.
And there's a, there actually are a lot of people that watch on fake TV, actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
A lot of people watch it.
So.
Yeah.
Just another way to get it out there.
Yeah.
Any questions or anything?
Nope.
Thank you very much, Jen, for talking, appreciate it.
Great, Jen.
See ya. Oh, man.
Oh, no.
There, there, good job.
Good job, there.
Yeah, no. Little paper towels?
I.
It's a little paper towel, it's, it's leather, it's fine.
See, yeah.
She laughed at me when I did it. There you go.
I was using my Italian hands.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right, let's go, well, let's, all right, we'll go back up to, um, update on, uh, the bu, substation? All right, let's go, well, let's, all right, we'll go back up to um update on uh the bu- substation.
Really, no update, the attorneys are still working, they've done their title work, now there's a couple of issues they're just talking about, no problems. Just wanted to research a couple of issues, and the closing may happen as early as this week.
Oh, cool. All right, and then uh, okay, so yeah, um, so we just wanna use this uh, the next one completely in executive?
Well, I can give a little bit of background, um, Oxbo Road resident Joe Masoris, of course, was here at the last meeting. And he's interested in collecting clean fill, no stumps or garbage, mind you. Um, for his property uh in town, which has kind of a hole he's trying to fill. Um, he um wishes for the town to bring its material, some of which we've already done, um, when we've been in the neighborhood. And he would like the general public uh to be notified of this option. We reached out to um the Vermont League of Cities and Towns for both legal and risk management um research. And they gave us uh their opinions about the matter, and we can discuss those in executive session.
Okay.
That's all right.
Yep. Um, and then uh Pittsburgh day plans, has anything changed and?
No, we were at our May sixth meeting, um, and um, we kind of decided on the rough contours and shape of the event. Um, and we will have an another follow-up meeting on July eighth. But meanwhile, I have followed up and talked with um not Satin Steel, but the other two bands who have traditionally played, and we've locked them in. We've also put a deposit in on a uh slightly or downsized tent from Celebration Rentals. We've um just received paperwork from Kevin Carvey seeking um. Uh, permission to have another helicopter display and perhaps get the Army, uh, the National Guard Band.
Warriors Army Band.
Form of Army Band, I'm sorry. And so those applications have been signed and sent back to Kevin, and we'll cross our fingers about those. Um, I think I gave Tom the information about where to get trophies and stuff for the car show. Um, and um, we're also doing whatever other time-sensitive preps need to be done. Um, but then again, we'll have a lot more to say after our July eighth meeting.
All right, awesome.
Yep.
You bring one of your cars this year?
Well, yeah, probably, yeah, yeah.
By the way, Joey Funbiz is available, and he can do the balloons and the magic, but he sold all of his kid stuff.
Oi, oi, uh.
The bouncy house.
Oh.
Duncan booth.
But he's given me the name of the person who bought it, and I'm I'm trying to reach that person to see if they can.
The Duncan booths is.
Oh, Duncan booth, yeah.
I think it was big, huh?
Yeah.
I, but we, I mean, we wanna do a bouncy house, I mean, those are pretty disgusting in 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 good times.
Well, I, we don't, you don't have to go in it, babe.
Well, no, no, but I'm just, I just wonder, I mean, and I don't, I'm just, it went through my mind, it's like with all that's gone on in the last.
I see, I see.
In the last year, do we really wanna do a bouncy house?
Could do the big slide thing.
One of the pieces of guidance I've seen like a couple of weeks ago was that all the discussion of sanitizing and surfaces was overblown.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So maybe uh we can get some guidance from VLCT about bouncy houses and surface areas like that, or whether. By September, we think that'll be a safer thing, I know it's very popular.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that's a good point, I hadn't considered the safety issue of that.
We can revert to the slip and slide thing that they used to do at the school.
Oh, yeah.
With the water and.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yes.
At celebrators.
I know, because it's one at a time, and yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
We'll come up with something.
Yeah.
Yep.
For.
Thank you for mentioning that.
All right, and then a scrap metal collection proposal.
Yes, um, at the last meeting, we heard from GHR seeking their renewal permit from the town. And we, the town now voted to give them another five-year permit, which is great. Um, at that time, we discussed a couple things, possible use um of their burner for our used oil. And also the possibility of having a container for scrap metal put down at the transfer station. I spoke with the um solid waste district, who kind of helps the towns get their permits renewed. Ours is just about done being approved by the state. And at that point, we can easily amend our permit if we wanted to add scrap metal. Um, there is one personnel component, probably you might wanna discuss, is a sensitive matter in the executive session before we decide on that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so favorable?
Yep. So, so my, I guess my question is, as far as this permit, even though. It's not going to Rutland Solid Waste or Casella or whatever, it's it's going, we still have to get a permit to have it, okay, all right, well, I didn't, okay.
All right, and then um assessors' request to extend deadline for lodging the grand list.
Yeah, Lisa, I was expecting to hear from tonight, maybe you'd be in a position to consider even without her being present. She wrote us an email, um.
June, June fourth was the, is the deadline?
Yeah, and she says that um it's not a big deal usually for towns to ask for an additional period of time. She thinks she might not need any more than a couple of weeks, but.
Didn't we do that last year?
We've done that before, we've done that.
But the automatic uh request uh that you need to submit is for a thirty-day period.
Thirty days.
And if the boards agreeable, we can have the chair sign it with a vote approving it, and then we can give it to them.
I'm, oh, yeah, we, go ahead and.
Well, does uh, has any problems?
No, it's, it's not gonna create a problem, we still have the tax bills ready to send out.
We're later than doing it normally is.
Need a motion for that.
Oh, we think we need a motion in a second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 And I'm gonna send that down to you, Alicia, now before I forget it.
All right. And then finally, uh, the COVID nine uh nineteen safety protocols and the changes to town policies.
Yeah, well, you folks are good consumers of news like everybody else, and I'll just reiterate the obvious, which is that. On the Thursday, the CDC kind of caught everybody napping, and uh remembered a bombshell. Mitch said that if you're fully vaccinated, that means your last shot plus two more weeks. There's very little risk of contracting COVID or spreading it. Governor followed suit and agreed that if you're fully vaccinated. You need not wear a mask indoors or outdoors with some exceptions. Um, obviously, I'm sure there will be growing pressure among staff and the public. As to whether Pittsburgh's ready to adopt a new policy. A policy thus far, since the COVID virus came on the scene. Was to require masks of anyone coming in to the town offices or on town property. Um, and um, one way I think that you might wanna consider. Is to say that the mask mandate is withdrawn, except for those who are not fully vaccinated. Obviously, we don't wanna be in the business of asking and interrogating people about their vaccination status. So there might be something of an honor system at play in that kind of policy. But um, it strikes me that um, that would be a reasonable thing to do, given that the federal government and the state government. Have told us that that is safe to do, now that we have.
I think a motion to is, can you get request?
I would just say that the language, so, and I, cause I've been, I've already been to a few places where.
You got, you got, you got a motion.
Oh, can't discuss for a second?
Well, we can discuss it, or somebody's gonna, yeah, you gotta wait, you got a motion.
Yep.
You gotta give a second, then we'll have a discussion.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, no, I'm. Why you paying me the big bucks?
Yeah, thanks. Um, no, and I'm all, I'm I'm ready to not be wearing a mask, and again, it's both at the federal and state level, you know, that is the new guidance. I just think the language could be a little friendlier, or not so like us, them. If it simply says, because I've already been to some stores where it just simply says like, you know, fully vaccinated, don't have to wear a mask, and that's it. Cause I feel like, I don't know, starting to call out people that aren't vaccinated yet is just a little like us versus them. And honestly, there's also gonna be, you're not gonna be able to tell anyways, because. Um, I know some people are concerned that people who aren't vaccinated are gonna just not wear a mask, but. I think there's just as much more, if more the other way, a lot of people I know who are vaccinated are still wearing their mask, so it's not even like you can tell whether somebody's wearing a mask or not.
I like.
You know.
Yep, I'm not trying to pick any fights, yep.
No, 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 yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess um, agree with Alicia, uh, what I thought was, you've got your thing that you wrote up, uh. Oh, town select board has ordered that all fully vaccinated persons may enter town buildings without a face mask, however. And what, this is what I'd like to say, because it's kind of what the governor said. We encourage those who have not been fully vaccinated to continue to wear a mask. I think that's friendlier, and then you aren't, you know. Because I would worry the way is as concrete as this is, it's almost a HIPAA violation, because you're forcing someone. To show that they're not vaccinated by wearing a mask.
If you don't check them, you'll never know.
The other side of that is that what about the protection for those who don't wanna be around non-vaccinated?
But if they're already vaccinated, then they don't have anything to worry about.
Oh.
That's not true.
I don't think that's necessarily true, you're, you're, while you're safe certainly around other vaccinated people. There's, there's a five percent chance with these ninety-five percent shots, you could be exposed by.
But the chance of, the chance of anybody getting the virus at this point is like ninety, ninety-nine point one five six percent.
Okay.
Ah.
Of you not, not getting it.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I just saw, I just talked to Levine today, said I think it's going the opposite way of you, the way you just phrased it, I think it was point oh. Oh, six chance of getting.
Yeah, ninety-nine percent sounds bigger.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yours sounded better, yeah.
I just, I feel like we're probably on the same page, it's just like, just I guess.
It's the wording.
Yeah, I I just wanna be sure that I'm not gonna disappoint staff who feel less than safe if we're not. Trying to prevent them from being exposed to a non-vaccinated person.
And, well, you don't need to name names, but are you finding that some people are, or maybe?
Well, like I said, there's, yeah, wide variety of risk tolerances.
We have a program.
Yeah.
I might be wearing a mask for another year just because of my risk tolerance, I doubt it, but some people, yeah, have different tolerance.
Yes, now we can get that.
Especially after the, what we've been through for fifteen months.
Yeah. Would it be just a matter of good courtesy to. Poll the people that are here all the time to see whether the majority of them.
No, you really can't ask, you're a whole, whole stuff, you know, it doesn't.
I mean, I could vote one way or the other, and I'm not here very much.
Yeah.
You know, and the folks that are here every day on a regular basis. Are, are there feelings to be recognized, or you just kind of override that? Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, one, one, one way you could, but you could avoid a problem with this is wait two more weeks and discuss it again.
I don't think so.
A lot of built businesses and towns are are not making that decision.
Well, yeah, I, well, I, I went shopping at Hannaford today, and. The same amount of people are wearing masks as were a week ago, or two weeks ago, or two months ago. You've got two people in there without masks, and everybody else has got one off, so people are.
People this morning, they were going to have a mask on.
Well, so that's.
Even outside.
It's gonna be a long transition period, I think, even if we put on a sign on the door right now that says, uh, vaccinated people don't need to wear masks. I think still ninety-nine percent of people are gonna wear masks. It's gonna be a trans, long transition period, I think.
So do you want that to be the policy for the time being, to remain the policy, or do you wanna make a change tonight? Is the question, I guess.
I'll make a change tonight.
You made that motion.
I know where Hank's at, where's everybody else at?
I'm on the fence on it.
I, e- e- I mean, I don't wanna wear a mask either, but I'm worried is, as concrete as this is written. Cause I mean, even the gov, if you look back at what you sent out, the governor is encouraging unvaccinated people to, and I don't think we should be. Putting stricter regulations than the state has, I think we're asking for trouble by trying to do that.
I just, I'm trying to avoid trouble with staff who might say, you guys aren't protecting us from people who are German.
Well, and that's.
Well, okay, well, so, well, let's, let's, I understand that. So maybe for the general public coming in here, but Hank doesn't wanna wear a mask, okay?
He's not wearing.
Can, can, can we as a select board decide not to wear masks?
Like, does that a meeting, and can you?
I think you can set, I think you can set whatever rules you want.